Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting, the city of Sodik for November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Please take the roll.
Dean?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Stanton?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
Becken?
Here. All members are present. Moving on to approval of minutes of our last meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor, this is Garn. Move to approve, move to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Garnett, a second by Peterson to approve the minutes. Any discussion, corrections?
I would just like to say, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I thought they were great.
Okay, so we're going to approve some great minutes. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, can I take a roll call, please, on the motion?
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. The, uh, motion to approve the minutes was approved unanimously. Moving on to mayor's comments, I'd like to welcome Lauren Stanton and Scott Dean to their first official regular council meeting. They did attend our last workshop as their first official function, so, uh, welcome to both of you. Uh, this evening, I'd like to give, uh, the city a, uh, update on our city manager search. Uh, I discussed things that I could share and things I could not share, uh, earlier today with, uh, Frank Walsh from our search committee or our search, contractor from Walsh Municipal Services. Uh, back in October, uh, the city interviewed three, uh, potential uh, search organizations and, uh, voted to hire Frank Walsh from Walsh Municipal Services. Frank initially interviewed twenty-one community stakeholders and took that information and developed a recruitment profile for our city manager position. The profile was published in the Michigan Municipal League and International City Managers Association websites. Also, he also focused on efforts on LinkedIn and Facebook. He completed targeted recruitment for seventeen Michigan candidates that fit that Sagittar profile. His recruiting efforts had twenty-eight candidates from across the country. The total of number of Michigan candidates reached sixteen. Recruitment, recruitment profile mandated a minimum of a bachelor's degree and experience working with local government. On Monday evening, November thirty, we will have a special city council meeting via Zoom to discuss the top ten candidates that Mr. Walsh will present to the city of Sagittar. All ten candidates have requested confidentiality as allowed under the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Thus, we will be going into an executive session. After a presentation by Mr. Walsh, the council will cut that number to four or five finalists. Those finalists also going forward will be entitled to protection under the confidential, confidentiality agreement. That confidentiality agreement, uh, can be waived when they formally accept the innovation or invitation to interview. So that's where we sit. A week from today, we will, we will interview, uh, well, we won't interview anybody, but we'll get a rundown on, uh, the ten top candidates that's presented by our search consultant and we will cut that number to four or five. And within two weeks, we will, we will conduct interviews of those people before making a final selection. Karen, you have any city managers' comments?
I, I did want to say that beginning this morning, we are up to full staffing. No one is out sick or in quarantine, so that's a great thing. Also, um, we've had a few requests for the two, two thousand and twenty traffic counts on Park Street. I learned today that they're still in the machine and so Deputy, excuse me, Deputy Flockstra is going to see if they, they can download them and when that happens, I will get them out to you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Agenda changes, uh, one agenda item under guest speakers, we'll add Dean Caffin, Caffinga from the Alligan County Board of Commissioners. Is there any other agenda items that want to be presented or added? If not, our, uh, agenda will be, uh, will stand with the one addition of, uh, Dean Caffin as a guest speaker. Next, excuse me, next agenda item, Lieutenant Brett Enfield from the Allen County Sheriff's Department. Is Brent with us this evening?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
You bet, you bet, Brent.
Hey, hey, how's it going? Um, yeah, knock on wood, uh, we haven't had any COVID issues, uh, with your guys as deputies there at the sheriff's office, so, um, just, uh, hopefully stay that course. Um, guys have been using, uh, good judgment and stuff, so, and, uh, practicing social distancing and so forth, so that's a good thing. Um, I, on Wednesday, I'll have Deputy Flockstra, uh, try to download those, uh, statistics from the, uh, speed signs. Obviously, this is a byproduct of, you know, our enforcement actions and looking at the thing is that actually seeing the traffic counts and stuff, so, uh, we'll try to compile that data and get that, uh, Karen from, uh, uh, that sign and so forth, so. Um, other than that, uh, it's been, again, still a little busier than I thought it would be, uh, for this time of year. Definitely some complaints and stuff, nothing that's really outstanding or, uh, you know, abnormal or anything like that, it's just, uh, you know, just a, a busier, uh, lots of calls and stuff like that, so. Uh, does anybody have any questions on anything?
Mayor?
Yes, Scott?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Lieutenant, and, uh, thank you for the data and your, um, commitment to getting us that data so the residents on Park Street can get a better picture of of the situation. Um, I'm just wondering if it's at all possible, uh, going forward. I really appreciated what you did, uh, at a past meeting where you showed data and some graphical charts that kind of represented the flow of calls that, that, that the department gets through the year and the type of calls that you get. Is it at all possible capturing that on an annual basis, so?
Yeah, yep, I was gonna, oh, sorry, sorry to cut you off, yep. Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna do that, uh, probably quarterly and then, uh, you know, obviously at a half-year mark and then, uh, for the full year encapsulated and the stuff that, that, the same calls for service, which that, that, that kind of gives you a pretty good snapshot of, you know, if our dispatch calls a deputy and says, hey, you know, there's possible drunk driver, go look for the drunk driver, uh, you know, downtown. It's really not gonna pull a complaint number, but it'll have a call for service. So it's obviously taking a time for a deputy to go do that or if, you know, hey, there might be, uh, you know, stick in the road or a road hazard down, down the road. It might not trip a, a complaint number like your guys are getting the complaint logs, but it will, it will show that, you know, they're taking time to have to go, uh, do that, so. Um, you know, we're not pulling a lot of complaint numbers that we probably, you know, should, uh, you know, show statistics and so forth, you know, we're, you know, because that just creates, you know, undue paperwork at times for the guys and gals, uh, you know, that, you know, I mean, it really, you know, it really doesn't do anything for, you know, creating extra paperwork, so. And I'd like to welcome you, you two, uh, new members, uh, to the boards also, uh, forgot to mention that, uh, look forward to working with you guys also, so.
Well, well, thanks, and likewise, and just to, just to complete the thought, yeah, I think it would be great for the council to get uh, that type of data. I think it will really help us make kind of real data-driven, you know, kind of decisions going forward. So the more data we can get, and, and the way you've presented it graphically was really helpful at one of the previous meetings, so thank you.
Yeah, I was, yeah, no problem. I was surprised, actually, between, you know, I, I was just thinking with the COVID and stuff, especially this last summer. And we did have a lot of different calls for service, you know, obviously some of the health and safety things and, you know, some of the other, uh, you know, different calls that came out, um, you know, but just, you know, it kind of goes to show that if you have, you know, four police officers, you're gonna have about the same amount of calls. If you, you know, if you guys had six or eight police officers down there, you, obviously you're gonna have more calls. I, you know, it's like, uh, when we do drunk driving patrols, you know, I, I'd be astounded when you, when you put three or four guys out there and that's all their job is to do is stop cars, look for drunk drivers. On a weekend, you know, we'll have six, eight drunk drivers, you know, I'm like, oh, man, there must have been a lot of drunk drivers that weekend. Oh, no, just all the deputies are, you know, busy doing other things and these guys focused on it and they're actually caught drunk drivers, you know, kind of thing, so. You know, it just, it goes to show kind of, you know, guys are out there working and stuff and, you know, the complaints and, you know, so forth will come and, you know, I was really surprised at the, at the consistency of the numbers between the two years, so.
Hey, uh, any other council members have any questions for Lieutenant Enfield? Okay, uh, thanks, Brent, we appreciate it, um, keep up the good work.
I appreciate it too, for the support, guys, so, yeah, if you need anything, give me a shout and I'll try to get that data, uh, extrapolated from the sign, we'll get that fired up and, uh, get that to you guys as soon as possible, so.
You got it, thanks again. Our next, next guest speaker, Lisa Mice from the Sodik Douglas Area Convention and Visitors Bureau uh, in our, uh, city packet. Tonight, we had an overview on the Sodik Douglas Convention and Visitors Bureau Marketing Strategy Implementation. Like to welcome Lisa and, uh, she's gonna provide us a, uh, a summary of this overview. Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, and thank you for, um, having me tonight. I met with, um, then Mayor Truster several weeks ago and also Karen Doyle on a separate occasion and talked about what the CVB is, is here for basically, um, and what we've been doing lately. And they both thought that it would be advantageous for the city council, uh, to be made aware of what we've been up to for the past year. So, to that end, um, I started with the mission statement, just to keep it very basic, to promote and market the vitality and desirability of the Sagittar Douglas area as a premier destination. I feel that, um, we've been doing that, um, and obviously long before I've been on board. But I want to try to get, well, before I do that, some of you know me and some of you don't, so I want to give you a little bit of background. Um, I'm originally from this area. I grew up in Fenville. I worked at Cranes for four years. All through college, I worked at the Gables. Mark, Mayor, Mayor Beck and I worked with Lisa for a long time. And I went to St. Pete's, um, my dad taught school at St. Pete's. My grandparents way back used to dance at the pavilion, so I've got some deep roots in the area and, uh, my passion for the area runs deep as well. So let's get into the presentation. I know that, um, I'm, I've only got so much time and, um, I want to be cognizant of that. So this is the presentation that you all got in your packets and I'm gonna kind of run through it fairly quickly because there are a lot of slides, but since you have them, you'll be able to review them at your leisure. This was put together by, um, our marketing firm that we started working with about a, a year and a half ago. They're called Concept A Creative and they're out of Spring Lake. They started doing project work for us about a year and a half ago. And then about last January, we decided that we would hire them to represent and market for us. So this was the packet that they put together just this past October, so it's very recent. What I want you to kind of pay attention to is that we had to pivot when COVID hit, just like everybody else did. And we anticipated, um, budgets being slashed and, um, summer not being as good as what it ended up being. So that's what this marketing plan is that you're going to see. We did a lot of digital, uh, advertising, we did a lot of social media, but we pulled back from some main, main things. This talks about who our target audiences, um, our primary audience as well as our secondary audience. Uh, we also look at, add what area we wanted to, um, promote to and market to. And obviously because of COVID, it became a drive, um, proximity that they could drive to Sagittar. Chicago, Detroit, Indianapolis became our markets and that's who we spoke to on, uh, digital and social. And then it kind of, um, supported that. You'll see that the majority of the visits to our state page came, twenty-nine percent came from the Chicago, Illinois market, nineteen from Detroit and six from Indianapolis. This also gives us an indication of maybe those markets in two thousand and twenty-one that we'd like to grow. The tone is just how we choose to speak to them and what our voice should be. Um, you'll see these are all the different areas that we touch on, so in addition to, um, regular advertising, whether that be digital, social or print or billboard. Um, we also have a public relations gal that now is now working for us as well as a, a social media person.
Uh, Lisa, this is Garnett, I'm sorry, are you advancing the slides or are you just, okay?
Are you not seeing them advance? Okay.
I see mission statement.
Oh heavens, no. I guess I had to do a new share. Sorry, thanks, Garn.
Yep.
So this is what you should have been seeing. All the different bubbles and all the different ways that our budget gets split up. And I don't, I'm not gonna go backwards, guys. Social media, Facebook, what's remarkable when you look at these numbers, obviously the impressions for a hundred and fifty-seven percent up increase we saw. But if you look and compare those numbers from what we were seeing in two thousand and nineteen and then to two thousand and twenty, just astonishing, the numbers. This is a sampling of, um, some of the Facebook posts that we had a lot of engagement on, so if you take a look, um, this one had over four hundred and thirty-six, three hundred and forty-four, um, a lot of people were clicking on these. Same thing with Instagram, our goal right now, as you can see, is to get ten thousand followers by the end of, um, two thousand and twenty-one. And, uh, the numbers across Instagram are just, um, growing as well. Instagram stories is something that our gal also pays close attention to, so you'll see those if you follow us. And, um, these are just some of the samples. Twitter, she does, um, put some Twitter, some tweets out there. I'm not as concerned with Twitter as I am actually with Facebook and, um, and Instagram. Um, but she did actually, she did get some, um, participation in those Twitter, in those tweets, especially as everybody, I'm sure, was remembering those volcanoes from, um, last January and February, uh, out at Oval Beach. Um, if you don't know, we launched with the help of Concept A Creative, we launched a brand-new website this past July. It's, uh, much more user-friendly, uh, much more appealing and pleasing to the eye. You can navigate through it very easily. And in addition to the website, we are now, um, putting new articles on the website monthly. And as well as the articles, we send out a newsletter to our fourteen thousand, um, readers on a monthly basis. The website articles, all this graph shows you is to make sure that we're hitting all the different, um, ideas that there are and we don't repeat ourselves for the articles. This is the email campaign I just talked about that goes out monthly. And how many people opened it, what the percentage was, how many sends went out. Then we get into the Google and the Facebook ads that we bought. Um, and you can see across the bottom that we were looking at different audiences with these ad buys. So sometimes we were talking to families, sometimes singles, sometimes the LGBTQ community, but we did spread it across all the audiences that we want to reach. Print advertising got pulled back this year because of the budget, but we did manage to put out in, um, last winter, this was, I'm sorry, this past January, two thousand and twenty, this was in Review Magazine in Grand Rapids. And then our Pure Michigan Spring/Summer, two thousand and twenty, we had the full-page ad. Our billboard advertising, um, you can see the spring/summer billboard that went up in April. And then the fall that's up right now, it was installed September tenth. And that is the Sagittar Dune State Park, by the way. It was a beautiful day. And then I know I've been sending these out, I hope that people have been seeing them. We just got one today that, uh, Sagittar Douglas was featured in the Chicago Tribune this past Friday, which was amazing, and they talked about, um, Singapore and, uh, that Sagittar has our own little Pompeii that was buried, the city that was buried. So we've been getting a lot of press, a lot of free press, which has been great. And that's what happens when you have someone that works for you, that that's what she does, that's her job is to do public relations. Another part of that job with, is setting up what's called fan trips or familiarization trips. So influencers and/or writers come to the community and they stay here. Um, we typically will comp them or, um, comp them dinners and/or night stay. And then they take tours of the area with their family, their kids, and then they write about it. This was one that was here this summer. Her name was Cheryl Eugenio from the Chicago Parent Magazine. They also do a lot of social media, so she posted a lot about the donut boats, about the Mitten Brewing Company. Every place she went, she posted. We just had some new photography happen this, um, fall and late summer and early fall, so you're getting a sampling right now of some of those photos that Craig Watson took, obviously down at the Oval Beach and then all over town. And these will be used, um, as I'm sure you guys are aware, um, photography really drives the marketing. So you need to have really good, um, photo assets in your coffers to be able to pull from these and use these in the upcoming months. And then we did also take pictures last winter. So we'll have some of these to use this, this season. Um, the last thing that we did with Concept Day was look ahead to two thousand and twenty-one, so right now they are working on the marketing plan for the upcoming year. Um, a lot of different things got discussed, what we want to focus on from digital ads to growing our social media channels, um, promoting experiences in the area, much like, um, Airbnb does with experiences, we're gonna focus on that. Increasing our newsletter signups. Increasing our market share in different markets. And that's what we've been up to. Very much, guys, for letting me talk.
Right. Any council people have any questions for Lisa? Okay, I'd like to thank you once again for taking time out and, uh, giving us this information, it's very informative. We appreciate the work the CV, CVB does for us and partnering with us too and a lot of, and a lot of efforts.
It's my pleasure, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, moving on, uh, Dean Caffinga wants to make a few comments, Alligan County Board of Commissioners, Dean.
First, thank you, and Lisa, that was fantastic. That was so impressive. Uh, wow, what a way to market the city. Uh, just to tell you a little bit of what's going on in the county, I'm, um, very thankful for, you know, we have a little over three hundred and fifty employees to think of from courthouse to the road commission, to community mental health, to, it goes on and on, but uh, a lot of these people are virtual and yet the function is still happening, I think, in a great way, so. I'm very impressed with that, but just to tell you some things that we've been doing, obviously we passed our two thousand and twenty-one budget. Um, we did an RFP for our courthouse entrance. Many of you, I'm sure, have been frustrated going to the courthouse and seeing how it's just hard to get to anywhere. We're changing, changing the design of that. We've just put an RFP out for how that works and you'll be seeing that later. Um, I just wanted to give you some stats on, um, like I'm part of nine-one-one, I heard you talking to Brett about just, um, Dean, you mentioned just the importance of having stats. Uh, we just decided to, I, to try to inform the citizens every month of non-emergency calls, emergency calls, what's going on in the county. And we're gonna just, you'll be able to just get it on your, on the website of the county and just post on it and you'll see what the numbers are for that month. And it would just better inform people to go, are, are deputies busy? Is the state police busy in what they're doing? Uh, because many times, you know, we've seen just how negative it's been in the past and we just want to just show a light on all the positive things that they're doing and the, and the, and the incredible number of calls that they're getting and what they, what they're involved in. So we're gonna try to get that out. Hopefully that will start like in the next month and that will be something that you can just click on and, and see. Also, just for your awareness, um, I'm also part of the Commission of Aging. And these are some numbers just for August, like we had five hundred and ninety in-home support visits, fifteen adult daycare, three hundred and eighteen people get meals, um, delivered to them, sixty-eight seniors get transportation. I know I was giving this report at Laketown and Linda asked me, she goes, well, how many people get help in Laketown? Um, so I just gave her this number like a week ago and we, there's three hundred and two people receiving, um, militaries services through um, COA Commission of Aging in Laketown. And, um, you know, just, just sort of interesting what they're doing. And then, um, just to tell you, obviously, we're very excited about the tax limitation. That went through, to think of the voters passing that, I was very thankful for the, um, our medical care facility. If you have, know someone who's been there, it's a five-star facility that has simply just been struggling to no end, just to make it, they do a tremendous job and, you know, they're just very, very good. And then I would just say to you that, you know, from, I just wanted to make sure, I just got it on, because I haven't seen you for a while, but we're functioning well, we're, um, even though we've taken some hits with COVID, uh, because of the CARES Act, we're, you know, it's just sort of balanced its way out and financially, we're hanging in there, you know, we're doing all right, you know, so the county's doing good. I just wanted to say hi to everybody. If there's some new members, I'm getting, looking forward to meeting you. And, um, I just appreciate being part of your meeting and have a great meeting, but, um, thank you very much.
Question, Mayor?
You bet, Ken.
Dean, are, will those police statistics that'll be on the web, will, will they be identifiable by community?
Um, I don't think they were. It was just, it was just sort of a, I think you can, I'm gonna check on that, Ken, I'll get back to you. I don't know, I don't know exactly how they're gonna post it besides they're gonna post it, but I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah, as we were saying earlier, it's always better to, you know, our, for our residents to be able to have it available on a regular basis, that'd be great.
Good idea, Ken, thank you for the question. I'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other council person have a question for Commissioner Caffinga? If not, we'll move on. Dean, thanks again, keep up the good work representing our, our community at the Alligan County Board of Commissioners. Uh, this is where we enter, uh, allow comments by the public. You wish to, uh, address the, uh, council this evening, please limit your comments to agenda items only. Limit your comments to three minutes. Please identify yourself by your name and your community of residence. Floor is open for anyone who wishes to address the council this evening. See anybody there, Aaron?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, all right, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting where the public can comment on anything they wish. Uh, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. Request for payments. We have a motion to approve the accounts payable this evening.
Mayor, this Garnett, move to approve accounts payable in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
We have a motion by Louis, a second by Truster, to approve the accounts payable as presented. Uh, are there any questions or concerns? If not, can we have a, uh, roll call vote, please?
Louis?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry.
Excuse me, what was that?
Um, just going through this.
Oh, okay, Lauren, I'm sorry.
Okay, if we ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, just going through, um, the invoices here, I was just curious, number five, the flooding pump for five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. I was just curious, um, with that pump being installed in June, what this line item is?
Pete, Pete is on?
Mark?
Yeah, Peter, you have a
What a, the pump on South Bubber burned up probably about five weeks ago, so it's a purchase of a new pump that we have. So that's what it's from.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Lauren?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. We have a roll call on the motion, please.
Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Peter, pay the bills. Next, moving our next agenda item under introduction of ordinance, state of emergency declaration. Karen, help us out on this one.
Last month, the legislature passed Public Act 228, which allowed local communities to continue remote meetings through the end of the year. Beginning January 1, there has to be a state of emergency to continue remote meetings. Our charter did not explicitly state that we could do that locally. So I asked Jeff to help us out there, and he wrote the ordinance amendment that gives the mayor the power to declare a local state of emergency should we need that. And it also names the city manager as the emergency coordinator. And this would only come into play. Well, it it could, you could do it anytime, but you only need to do it if the state does not continue the declaration of emergency because of the COVID. If the council wants to continue doing remote meetings, there would have to be a state of emergency.
You know, comments by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
Karen, thank you for that. Tell me if we declare that as a state of emergency, will that impact any other services or things that we have to do? So the click?
I'm not aware of any. Were you thinking of something in particular?
Well, if the city is designated itself, it's in a state of emergency, does that impact other things that the city does or has to do for funding or grants or anything like that? How far reaching is that declaration of emergency? Is it just so we can have Zoom meetings?
That's why we had it written to continue remote meetings. If there's a countywide or a statewide declaration of emergency, there oftentimes is grant funding available to help the locals. I'm not aware of anything if it's just one community who have an ability to ask for grant money because of something very local. But usually, if there's something like a flooding event or or COVID emergency where there's extra costs, the the county does declare an emergency and and the grant funding would go through them. Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. This is Garnett.
Sure.
For Karen. So I'm just to kind of help us along. It looks like we're, this is kind of like a first reading of this, that we would actually vote on this in December at the December meeting. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. So is that regarding Chris's question, is that something you can just kind of check for us to make sure that we're not I guess tying our hands in a way? If we do adopt this, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Was that Chris who was commenting?
Sorry.
Well, go ahead.
No, I was just, I couldn't figure out quite how to say it. I think Garnett put it perfectly. Would it impede us from doing anything else once we declare ourselves in a state of emergency? Is it more far reaching than just allowing us to have Zoom meetings? And I have no idea how it could impact. Just wondered if if we should maybe find out.
Mayor, and then Mayor, just as follow up to that, then maybe we could, if we're kind of into these first, second reading type things, maybe our next workshop then Karen can bring that back to us. So we have that full clarification before we vote on it on the 14th.
Sure, I've got I've got something that I'd like to have checked also. But I'll defer to any other council members.
Oh, Mayor.
Go ahead, Scott.
But along this theme, I'm just one other thought to consider. Would this be something then, given that it is oriented to the Zoom meetings to respond to the pandemic? Do we want to consider putting a deadline on this or a timeline when it would expire or be reviewed?
I would think that that could be part of the motion, or that was one of my questions. So, you know, some type of timeframe.
Yeah, Mayor.
But but the question I have is does this give the mayor unilateral discretion to to declare such a state of emergency? Or does it have to go to council for unanimous vote?
Mark?
Yeah, Ken.
The way I'm reading this is that the mayor has the authority to declare the emergency. But that's only good for seven days. So unless the council endorses that, it would it would go out of effect. So I think that's a check and balance on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Reading that that way, then, would that mean that if we wanted to continue them, we'd have to do, we'd have to re-up it every week? In order to have a Zoom meeting?
It doesn't, it doesn't say need to do that, but you could.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think, for example, the county and the state, when they declare a state of emergency, like, for example, the Health Department, the statewide Health Department, they put a three-week on it. And it expires. I envision that if the city did that, there would also be an expiration date because you wouldn't want to have a declare emergency that lasted forever. So I think you would put a a date on it and then revisit it as that date approached to see if you needed to extend it or not.
Yeah, Mayor, I I agree that that would be an important safeguard to to add that to the to the ordinance amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you've seen Cindy Osmond's hand up.
No, I haven't. Hi, you're Cindy. Go ahead, Cindy.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. The way that I read this was the state of emergency declared by the mayor would expire after seven days unless extended by council. That doesn't mean that the county couldn't declare it for a longer time or the state couldn't declare it for a longer time. In fact, I believe that our county commission has declared a state of emergency that extends through January 31. So the ma- the mayor would not have to exercise that because the county already did it until after January 31. And you might want to keep that in your ordinance because who knows what could happen after this pandemic. There might be a need to declare a state of emergency for some bizarre thing like COVID that might come up in the future. But the intent and the purpose of the ordinance, if you had a chance to look at it, the the purpose was to allow for remote meetings. And it allows for things like a blizzard or a flooding event or other natural or mad made emergencies.
So are there are there some things that need to be clarified by Jeff prior to the next meeting? Karen, do you have a a few things that you want to get clarified?
Well, the main thing is if we do declare an emergency, what are the ramifications? How how does that affect other things that we do? If we can put a timeline on the ordinance to expire, like Cindy, I wouldn't recommend you you did that, but I will find out if we can put a a sunset on an ordinance. And I think that's it.
Okay, well, I think we should get those questions answered and sit down. And we really have a chance to discuss this in much detail. I think the the workshop will provide a better venue for that.
And as long as there, the county has a state of emergency until the end of January, you know, it it would only come into play if someone above us, the county or the state, had not declared a state of emergency, but we we thought we needed it to continue locally.
Right.
So Mayor, a question for you. Is this something that we need to go on ahead and move to place on the agenda in December? Would you like to have that happen?
Well, there is a motion that needs to be taken. And I think
Ken's ready.
With a with amendments or with questions to be asked at the next at the next workshop. And I don't believe we're mandated to bring it to the next meeting. We may opt to delay it because we didn't have satisfactory answers, or there might be further questions that need to be addressed.
Mr. Mayor?
Moving it on, Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I I think timing is kind of important here because the the current order really expires December 31st. The one that replaces it until the end of January is much more restrictive. Right now, we can just call Zoom meetings whenever we want. So I I certainly like to see this being considered at the December 14th regular meeting. But we will have prior chance to discuss it, review it at the work at the coming workshop. I I think that would be the best way to go. And if we can't resolve the issues that we have with it on the 14th, we can just either table it or or defeat it. So I would move to place the proposed ordinance to amend title three, chapter 31, entitled Administration Departments, Boards, and Commissions to add a new section, 31.02, entitled Emergency Declarations to the Code of the City of Sagittarius on the December 14th, 2020 Regular Council Meeting Agenda for Action.
The second. Chris, Scott.
Okay, motion by Truster. Seconded by Peterson. Any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Truster?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Okay, so our next agenda item. Purchase of a new patrol car. Karen?
First off, my very first paragraph, I have a typo. It's the 2015 SUV that has 119,000 miles on it and is having issues. We we discussed at the workshop, this replacement and determined we did want a white one to continue our separate identity from the county. The 2015, it's in regular service now, and with that many miles on it and starting to have mechanical issues, it it does need to be a reserve vehicle for when when there's an extra reserve officer on, like the holidays and so forth, when we have extra deputies on. The state bid was 31,544, and Barber Ford did meet the state bid. And the new model will be a Ford Explorer Interceptor, same as the old ones, except it'll be a 2021. The budget for the vehicle was 30,000. And after we get the car, there's a lot of equipment that goes into it in an aftermarket. And it's quite likely that that full cost of the aftermarket stuff will run around 12,000, 13,000. By the time you add the radios and the cage and the decals and and all that stuff. So I did want you to know that you probably have to do a budget amendment eventually. The the lead time on getting this vehicle is two to three months. And any questions?
Like Karen, I noticed on page 57, the the quote for the new vehicle, I believe it still has the box for the vehicle color. I don't know if that's something you just do verbally with the with the with the dealership or if it needs to be documented somewhere that we actually want white.
Um, under the options, it says Oxford White Clear Coat. And I will make sure of that before we press the button.
Thanks.
Okay, all right. Good, Scott.
You're looking at this at the county bid. I put the county in there just to show it's it's identical to the county.
Oh, okay.
The first step is what our what our vehicle is.
Okay, I understand. Thanks. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem, no problem. And any other questions?
No, Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
Move to approve, move to approve purchase of a white police interceptor utility SUV from Barber Ford for a total purchase of $32,994.
A second. There a second there?
Second.
Second by Scott. So we have a motion by Garnett, second by Dean to approve the motion to purchase a new police cruiser white in color. Police color roll.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, yeah. And just just a point of reference. The city maintains a border pool fund that we make monthly donations into for future equipment and vehicle purchases. So that's, this money is thought out, planned, and budgeted for. Another point of interest is when we, and and just to bring everybody up to speed, and maybe Chris and Ken want to add on this, is that when we we joined a Alligan County Sheriff's Department, city manager at that time put in a, we're supposed, there's a split of assets between the two communities, including vehicles. Those assets weren't split on a timely basis, but the city manager at the time put in a grant request because to to accumulate some funds with the state of Michigan, because this was a joint venture between two different governing agencies. Hence, we received a grant, I think it was like 150 or 160,000 dollars, of which we purchased the the three white police vehicles. So that's why they all came all at once. And so that was, it's a pretty good foresight by Kirk at the time. Just just thought that might be of of interest to to council people who weren't aware of that. So moving on, our next agenda item. Mil Mill Foil Advisory Group Membership Amendment. Karen?
The Mill Foil Group met for the first time two weeks ago on Wednesday. And Scott Dean was able to join the group. And Scott has a a background that he he works for Eagle and was able to contribute in a way that the committee thought would be advantageous. So Councilwoman Lewis recommended that she came off the committee and that Scott came on. And the motion here will amend the original resolution to have Scott added and Garn come off. On a personal note, I I hope Garn continues to come to the meetings because she asks questions in such a way that I can understand what the BRINX are saying. So that's that's my comment. I hope Garn continues coming, but I I think Scott will make a great addition to the committee.
Hey. Does someone like to present the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Holly.
Hi.
I was, I'd like to make a motion to I was, I'd like to make a motion to approve amending Resolution 201026B by adding Scott Dean to the Eurasian Water Mill Foil Advisory Committee and removing Garnett Lewis.
Second.
Motion by Leo, second by Stanton. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thanks for stepping up, Scott. Appreciate it. Next. Order of Business. Extension of the city employment of our interim city manager. Karen, you want to introduce this?
When I was, excuse me, when I was first approached to see my willingness to work for the city of Sagatuck for this interim period, I said I could only work until December 1. My husband and I had some travel plans, but as with everything this year, our plans changed. So if it's the council's desire, I can stay on until the end of January.
Okay, a week and a half or two weeks ago, Mayor Pro Tem Lewis and myself met with, with Karen anticipating that her, her term was ending here December 1st, and we started discussions about continuing her employment with the city. Thus, we have a extended agreement in front of us this evening to extend her employment with the termination, termination date of close of business on January 29th, 2021, with an option for her to leave employment in the event a city manager, new city, when the new city manager is hired. So any questions for Karen on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor? Go ahead, Holly.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the First Amendment Employment Agreement between the city of Sagatuck and Karen Doyle Holman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Leo. Seconded by Lewis to improve the employment as presented. If no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, yes. And so Karen, welcome. We appreciate it. When we first met, it was kind of unsure whether, what your intentions were, but we're glad that you've you're on board with us again for the next two months, so.
Thank you very much. I thank you for your confidence in me, and I do want to say I have really, really enjoyed it. Your staff is wonderful. They they're so helpful to me, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to a couple more months in Sagatuck.
All right, all right. Moving on, our next agenda item. Professional Services Agreement Regarding Campbell Road Improvements. Karen?
Okay, Campbell Road Improvement. This professional service agreement between Fleece and Vandenberg and the city of Sagatuck is for the project between McV, McVeigh Drive and Park Street, Ferry Street. Consists of replacing the six-inch water main with an eight-inch water main. Crush, reshape, and resurface the road between McVeigh and approximately 400 feet west of Park Street. And then the 400 feet west of Park Street to Park Street will be a complete reconstruction, including sub-basin underdrain. This project will be split with the city of Douglas, and as with the construction portion of it, the engineering fees will be split. Sagatuck's portion is 17,200. This design agreement is a little bit different than what you've seen since 2009, when you had another split project with Douglas. So I just wanted to point out why it looks a little bit different, but there was a lot of back and forth, I understand, in 2009 to work out this agreement between the two cities and Fleece and Vandenberg. And so we've used that as a template to do this agreement. Any questions?
My understanding that this will be on Douglas's agenda at their next council meeting?
Their first meeting in December, they will have it on their agenda.
Right. Do I have a motion on the motion on the proposed service agreement? Instruction and Service Agreement with Fleece and Vandenberg for Campbell Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
I move to approve the Professional Services Agreement between the city of Sagatuck Fleece and Vanderbrink Engineering for the Campbell Road Improvements.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Peterson, a second by Truster. Are there any further questions?
Mayor, just, sorry, real quick. Yep, just caught, nope, I just caught on page 71. Obviously, we'll need to change the name of mayor there so it can be signed appropriately, so. Point that out for Erin.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, when, just for clarification, when did we decide exactly when we'll start this project? I know there was discussion about when Douglas would be able to start the project after their fiscal year July. On our end of things, what are we hoping is, you know, just to let people know when this might start?
Well, typically, that's part of the, the project overview that the engineers will work out. They'll make some determination. Typically, in the past, what they've made determinations on is availability of contractors, availability of materials. How, how close to the summer season we get? I think that'll kind of be, it'll work out in the details, I guess, in the coming months. Whether, and then when it's presented to us. I mean, it could be presented to us to start in July, and we might say, hey, there's no way. We'll have to put it off to the, to the fossil. There is, you know, there is some discussions that'll go on through this, you know, through the process. I don't know if that helps you or not, but that's, we, how I've seen them come, come through in the past. We usually are kept pretty well up to speed on them, too. So I guess that's about all I can share with you. I don't, anybody else have any comments on that? Okay. Can we call the question, please? Vote?
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. So the motions approved unanimously. Next agenda item. Regarding Wits Park Band Shell Design and Construction Phase Services. Karen?
At your workshop, you saw the prices for the two different designs. The homage to the big pavilion was, would have been a lot more expensive than what we were prepared to pay. And another point was that I should say that we had budgeted to pay. And another thing was that every time there was maintenance on it, there would probably have to be special ordered parts because it was so custom. So city council was leaning toward going to the simpler design, and John Moxie did prepare a budget for the complete scope of engineering from design through construction, and it includes the topography of the whole park and so forth, too, not, not just the band shell. The amount quoted is 32,800. And it seems to me like we're going really fast on this, but we, we do need to go fast on it so that we can have a spring construction. So any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
I'm going back to the discussion we talked about with the kind of iconic gazebo, as well as the bathroom. I'm guessing that this is looking, as we talked about, this would be including this, this taking out the bathroom as well as putting in the new fan shelf. Is there any point to be made now or later if we should try to find some way to incorporate that painting that is there? Whether we move it or we replicate it, would that be any part of this, or would we need to add that to that if the council would agree?
If it included replication?
I don't think it did.
No, the, the agreement did not. And it did not include, well, the bidding would include demolition if you decided to demolish it. I think we should discuss that, but I don't think it needs to hold up this agreement to start the design of the band shell itself.
Thank you. That's what I wondered.
Isn't?
Go ahead, Holly.
Um, isn't the, aren't the bathrooms a separate project from the band shell?
Definitely.
Yeah.
That's how, that's how I look at it myself, but comments?
Just for clarification, then, when we talked to John Moxie, he said we have to look at both the band shell and putting it in as well as the bathroom because of the drainage issues. So for clarification, I thought this had in it demolishing the restroom, but maybe I'm wrong. If I am, that's fantastic. We can put it off till another time.
Well, it's included in Karen's overview, demolition of existing restroom building, along with a removal of a small number of trees. So that must have been how she interpreted also. So I stand corrected, it looks like this is looking into the preliminary design phase. Representatives going through that also. Construction is. But I, you know. I don't know what, 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 I, I kind of agree with Karen. We can move forward with this, get more clarification on that. That's a very small, small part of this, this project. Also, a good idea that if you tear down a restroom, you have a plan to replace them, too, so. Even if they're temporary, if they don't, obviously going to be new ones, so.
Mayor, this is Garn.
Discussion.
This is Garn. Motion to approve the authorization to proceed with design and construction phase services with Fleece and Vandenberg, and authorize the mayor to sign the authorization document.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor? I do, maybe for Karen. With this $32,000 expenditure, was that included in their estimate of the $180,000 for the entire project?
No. The, the $180,000 was for the band shell itself.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Now, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. So we'll, we'll get this, get this band shell rolling on the design stage. We got a pretty aggressive timeframe on this, so it's important to keep, keep moving forward. Again, I think some of the minor parts of this project, such as a demolition of the restroom, at least from a cost standpoint, we, we can work those details out as we, as we proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to walk back my, my comment to Ken that the 180,000 quoted before did not include the engineering. I want to check on that. I'm going to change my answer to I don't know. So I will check on that and make sure that I gave you the correct answer.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I believe that's really important because you know, this project is creeping up there. If, if it's not, if the 32K is not part of the 180K, now we're way over 200K and, and climbing, because there'll be other costs associated with this as well.
Correct.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. The MERS and we needed a adoption of an agreement addendum. Curtis, I guess you can introduce it or turn it over to Peter when you see that.
I'm going to defer to Peter.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Basically, what this is about, this is a housekeeping item for MERS who handles all the functions and fiduciary responsibilities for the defined benefit slash hybrid program that the city has for the full-time employees. MERS is basically making, they have 800 different units of governments where each, everybody has their own little trust with them, and they're basically, MERS wants the practices of all their local units. They want to have that in writing. And that's basically what this says. It's just an addendum, we're not changing how we've handled anything since I've done it, since '07. It's basically this housekeeping that MERS is on the same page, the city is on, is how, what numbers are turned in and hours are turned in for base wages only for our employees. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions.
Peter, this is different from the transfer or the change of vendor, so to speak.
That's, that's correct.
So
Yes, totally correct.
Two-phase, two-phase retirement plan for employees.
Correct. So this is totally separate. The other one was a 457. This one is what the MERS referred to as to a hybrid plan, which basically has like the old style defined benefit slash defined contribution, which some people also refer to as a 401K. And that's what this one pertains to. It has nothing to do with the 457, where we, which at the 1st of January, we're going to transfer all that into the MERS program also. And basically, it's housekeeping for, for the MERS on their standpoint. So employees say, hey, no, my W2 wages say I made this much money, but MERS only, my benefits only being calculated on this, and MERS wants to have that in writing on both sides, which currently, they don't have with the city, and so they're making it all their units of government through all these addendums, so it specifically states what, what is the definition of wages?
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Sure, Mayor, this is Garn.
Sure.
Sure. Move to approve the Michigan Employees Retirement System Hybrid Plan Adoption Agreement Addendum.
Second by Leo. Okay, so we have a motion by Lewis, a second by Leo to approve the Michigan Employees Retirement and Hybrid Plan Adoption Agreement as presented. Any further questions? If not, have a roll, please.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Okay, moving on this evening, we have no consent agenda. This is the second opportunity for the public to address council. They can address council on any item they, they wish. As previously, please limit your comments to three minutes. Identify yourself with your name and your community of residence. Let's see, Mr. Fox out there, recognize him. Let's see, Mr. Fox out there, recognize him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe a light moment to, you know, get close to the end of your meeting going into Thanksgiving. But there is actually a point to this. Those of you who, and I'm not really one of them, but if you spend much time on local Facebook stuff, you've seen over the past, whatever it is, three or four days, news that the the sign, and I realize this is outside of your purview as the city council, Sagatuck, but I think it's a cautionary tale. That the sign that had graced the northernmost end of Douglas on Blue Star Highway, which had been put up, I'm guessing roughly two weeks ago, kind of an obnoxious little sign with solar powered flashing LEDs that greeted you as you crossed the bridge and headed into Sagatuck. Uh, that that sign, as I say, lasted for about two weeks, and then I think earlier this week it was taken down. If you hadn't seen it, it's worth, I have a copy. It's worth a look, and I'm going to put it up in front of my face, so it's much more interesting than my face. There it is. That's the sign that greeted you when you went into Douglas. It may be showing up backwards, by the way, I can't tell because of the screens and so forth, cameras and so forth. To try and explain exactly what a driver was coming up against on Blue Star Highway when they exited the bridge. Now, all of us who've dealt with that nightmare over there kind of know what that deal was about. But imagine you're one of the people from Chicago or Cleveland or wherever are summer visitors who came up against that. I mean, it's almost panic inducing. It's, it's, it's so bizarre. I was actually way back, went to a council meeting in Douglas when they came, when they were right up against the process of approving the alterations they made to Blue Star, to the Blue Star Highway. My impression, I could be wrong, but my impression was not a great deal of thought went into that. It was pushed by one individual. Everybody did a kumbaya and looked at pretty pictures of trees alongside Blue Star Highway and said, let's do it. And before anybody knew it, and including a lot of people in Douglas, before anybody knew it, we have what is in place there now. So to me, the cautionary tale for all of us really, especially as it relates to infrastructure as important as the Blue Star Highway is to this locale, that all due consideration and time and thought and creativity be applied with constituent, substantial constituent input before any kind of changes that can take an infrastructure item as important as the Blue Star Highway and render it this bizarre, this dangerous, and quite honestly, likely to be ultimately reversed or or changed somehow. It's going to have to be. I think that relates to what's going to ever, whatever the solution is on Park Street and so on and so forth. So as I say, it's only a cautionary tale. Take your time. Don't change really important stuff on the fly. Not that any, I'm not suggesting any of you are so oriented, but somehow it happened in Douglas, and those are, they're good people over there. I know many of the people who were involved are very good people. But somehow caution went out the window or a vision became a mirage. I don't know, but it can happen. So thanks for, thanks for listening.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Yeah, uh, any well, one else, the tenants would like to address council? You see anyone out there? And I'm not seeing anybody.
I'm not.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So we'll move on. We have no communications this evening. Boards and commissions and committee reports. Nothing listed, but we can kind of can run through them a minute. Ken, I think you wanted, we're going to make a couple comments regarding the mill foil meeting.
Uh, the mill foil group did meet a couple of weeks ago. And we definitely have a good group with a lot of very experienced and talented people on board. We agreed that the first task was going to be evaluate what is the best approach to controlling the mill foil. We have a number of options. There's herbicides, there was cutting and harvesting. There's a thing called diver assisted suction harvesting, which is kind of an interesting concept. There are weevils who eat mill foil foil that are a possibility, although we can't identify a weevil maker at the moment. Uh, and then dredging that if you made the water a lot deeper, the mill foil wouldn't grow. You know, some of these are prac- are are practical. Some of these are impractical. Some of them are very costly. So we're going to move forward in evaluating all this. Our next meeting actually is this coming Wednesday, and Karen has put together a very good panel of experts, of consultants and vendors, contractors, I should say. And she's also done some research to contact our neighboring communities to see what, if anything, they've done that's been successful or not in in controlling this. We've also talked with Douglas, and they're very interested in partnering with us. Next year is they're committed to go ahead with their herbicide treatment on their side of the bridge. And we may be able to benefit by using the same contractor and getting a discount in that regard. Uh, so as I say, our next meeting is this coming Wednesday, and we're pretty excited that we can, we'll, we can move forward on this and come up with some good recommendations.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Thanks, Ken. If anything for planning this evening? Okay, anything from historic commission?
Didn't meet.
Okay, thank you. Cal Lake, so the water did meet. It was basically going over just, uh, operational related items, uh, storm damage, power, power interruptions, which really causes havoc with the, with your lift stations. In fact, we lost complete power to the wastewater treatment plant for about sixteen or eighteen hours. Fortunately, we have a big battery backup system built in. It's not a bad battery, but a big generator system at the wastewater treatment plant and at several of our other key infrastructure locations. A couple of items we are working on with our attorney is reviewing parts of our employment manual in the area of paid time offers versus forfeiture of paid time accrual and reviewing our holidays and our holiday pay for the employees who are called in on, on, on those holidays. Oh, that's all we have from Cal Lake. If I miss anybody, anybody have anything else to add?
Mayor?
Yes.
Recycling committee met this morning, and once that recording is up, I'll make sure everybody gets a copy. We had a, a very, very pleasant conversation with Jack Brown, who's the new representative from Republic Services. He was excellent. And I think everyone will enjoy, it's about probably forty-five minutes of discussion with Jack. We had about eight questions for him as far as how Republic can assist us in educating constituents. And he was, he was absolutely wonderful and referred us to their page, which is specifically called recycling simplified dot com. It's got some great educational materials. And then I will also post, we are kind of meeting is kind of a, I should say loosely with folks from the Recycling Project, which is a national organization. We're going to be chatting with them about some possible funding support for putting out materials. So I'm still on my mission to get as much of this paid for as I can. So stay tuned on that. So that's it. Very good meeting.
All right. Thank you, Garnet. Hey, one question, I think Barry might have brought this up in the past. And maybe that's on their website is the calendar with proposed recycle pickups. I don't know about anybody else. That was pretty helpful to me. Make sure that I didn't miss a Monday putting on sky blue pickup out by the road.
I will check.
So that was very helpful. So even if maybe the city could come up with something along that route, make it available, it'd be helpful.
That'd be great.
Okay, thanks. I guess that ends our board and commission reports. Go to council comments. Uh, I guess I'll just call on each council person. Christine?
Yes. Thank you. At the workshop, I brought up the issue of the erosion of of Oval Beach. And obviously, it's not just our beach. It's all around the the lakes. Um, and I sent a couple of informational pieces to both Karen and Mark. But since then, another one has come out in Bridge, Michigan, which said that South Haven, Benton Harbor and St. Joe have made requests to the Army Corps of Engineers to look into replenishing. And I have no idea what it would be like to find out about that, but it seems like if our neighboring communities are doing something like that, we should at least be part of the discussion. I have no idea whether it's a mayor to mayor call or a city manager, city manager call, but I think it would be worthwhile to take some time to look into that.
Good idea. I'll, I'll talk with with Karen on that. Typically, the bleach beach replenishment comes with a dredging project associated to the the harbor or the channel. So that's the last time we had Oval Beach and areas replenished. I believe that was three, three years ago. And so I don't know if that, if their projects are tied in also to some type of a dredging, even though you wouldn't think you dredge with high water, but they continue to do so. But we'll check on that. I think that's a good idea. Holly?
Um, I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving and no comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lauren?
Um, I just wanted to make mention of how great the Christmas lights look downtown. One hundred percent improvement, improvement from last year. They look amazing. And I know it was just a huge boost to the morale downtown having those lights on. So big thanks to Chris and all of your efforts on that. I think it looks fantastic. Otherwise, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right, thank you. Scott?
Also would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and would also urge everyone to take the next couple nights off from cooking and maybe get some takeout from some of our local restaurants. I think they would really appreciate it. I know their staffs have been having a tough year. So there's some great offerings at some of our local restaurants for takeout. So so get away from the cooking for a couple of days.
That's a good call. Good call. Garnet?
Yeah, just really quickly, I know we won't be meeting again in what, probably two weeks. So I'd like to request that we make sure we're incorporating our new members on the board into boards and commissions. So if we could review city council representation on the boards and commissions soon, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Ken?
Sure. I'll start off as the pandemic nag and point out that Sagatuck is now experiencing about sixty-nine cases of COVID. Douglas is thirty-two. That's really, you know, you remember over the summertime, we were really thrilled that we had like nine or ten cases. It's really hit us, and I think we got to redouble our efforts to continue to urge people to obey the rules. I think by and large, that's happening in in town. But man, this is, this is getting to be pretty bad. Then on a lighter note, I'd echo what Lauren said about the downtown lights. They look great, and we have Krista thank for for pulling that off. I mean, she, she was out on the streets for hours. I know that because she'd keep calling me and say, you got to come check this out. And did a great job in working with our contractor to give us a great look. As well, I think we should recognize Sean Steele for, we have our huge tree in Coughlin Park for yet another year, and Sean still graciously works on that at no cost to us to help get that put up. And so it really looks great, not to mention the light show that he has on Old Pike, the Old Pike property. I mean, it's wonderful. I've always thought that I'd like to encourage all of the citizens of Sagatuck to light up, and and we could become a destination for people looking to see holiday lights. That'd be great. I mean, some stars like Kindle particularly are really doing a great job. So that's all I had to say, other than happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to echo the same sentiment regarding the lights. Town looks great. I know our, our employees are depleted department, a public works department, really, really hustled to work on our parks. And so our, our, our thanks to them. And of course, my favorite light is the iconic star on Mount Ballhead. That's been up there for, well, as long as I can remember. So it it's really a pleasure to see that every year. That's a great tradition. So that being said, on behalf of the city of Sagatuck, I'd like to wish all our citizens a thanks and safe Thanksgiving. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Truster, second by Louis to adjourn the meeting. Roll call vote, please.
I could take the liberty, if you don't mind, first. I keep getting this question a lot about the recycling. It's up on our website under news and notices. And it also went out in the email newsletter today, which if anybody asks, if you go to our homepage, there's a sign up for that newsletter that goes out with that kind of stuff. And I am in the process of starting a new website. That said, Truster?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Very good. Hey, Aaron, did you say that's on the news page?
News and notices.
News and notices.
It's a very difficult to navigate.
Yes, yeah, I know, I know.
It's not an ideal way to share the information, but the interface we're using is extremely archaic right now. And it's even very simple tasks on our current website interface are kind of a struggle.
Okay, what I think, once we get that Facebook page up for recycling, I think I'll just put a link to that, and that'll be easy for folks to find. They won't have to go digging for it.
I can also.
Sound good?
PDF.
Oh, that's cool. Thanks. Thank you. Good night, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Night, everybody.
Night.